Good evening, everyone. We are going to begin the regular meeting of the Pinole Planning Commission on October 27th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Here at the Pinole City Council Chambers at 2131 Peristory in Pinole. Public comments can be submitted in person by attending the city council chambers and filling out a yellow public comment card and submitting it to the appropriate city staff. Can also submit a public comment via Zoom. Members of the public may submit a live and remote public comment via Zoom video conferencing. You may download the Zoom mobile app on your preferred operating platform. If you have a computer, you can test your connection via Zoom. And you may join via Zoom at the webinar ID 865-0537-5301 or by phone app by dialing 1-669-900-6833 or 1-253-215-8782 or 1-346-248-7799. Speakers will be asked to provide their name and city of residence, although providing this is not required for participation. Each speaker will be afforded up to five minutes and speakers will be muted upon their opportunity until their opportunity to provide a comment. When the chair opens, the comment period for the item you wish to speak on, please use the rings hand feature or press star nine if connecting via telephone, which will alert staff that you have a comment. And then, and then press star six to unmute. To comment with your video enabled, please let this lady Kirk know and city staff if you'd like to have your camera on once you are, when is, once it is your turn to speak. Written public comments can be submitted to the planning staff for the meeting at via email at D H A N H A M at pinole.gov. Please include your full name, city of residence, and the agenda item that you are commenting on. There are other ways to also watch this meeting live on channel 26. They are recast the following week. The Pinole Community TV Ted TV schedule is available on the city's website at www.pinole.gov. And this meeting is also live stream on the city's website and will remain archived on the site for five years. If none of these options are available to you, or if you need assistance with public comment, please contact David, Planning Manager David Hannam at 510-724-8912 or D Hannam at pinole.gov. Americans with Disabilities Act in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. If you need special assistance to participate in a city meeting, or if you need a copy of the agenda or the agenda packet in an appropriate alternative format, please contact the city clerk's office at 510-724-8928. Notification at least 24 hours prior to the meeting or timed when services are needed will assist city staff in assuring that reasonable arrangements can be made to provide accessibility to the meeting or service. Please note, staff reports are available here and for inspection at this on the city's website, and you may also contact the city clerk via email at H B E L L at pinole.gov. Citizen participation persons wishing to speak on a item listed on the agenda may do so when the chair asks for comments in favor or in opposition to the item under consideration. After all those persons wishing to speak have done so, the hearing will be closed and the matter will be discussed amongst the commission prior to rendering a decision. Any person may appeal an action of the planning commission or the planning manager by filing an appeal with the city clerk in writing within 10 days of such action. Following a public hearing, the city council may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning commission, and the planning commission may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning manager. The cost to appeal a decision is $500 and a minimum 2,500 deposit fee. Please note, if you challenge a decision of the commission, if you challenge a decision of the commission regarding a project in court, you may be limited to raising only those concerns that you or someone else raised in the public hearing or in writing delivered to the city at Pinole at or prior to the public hearing. The Ralph M. Brown Act Government Code subsection 54950, in enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, boards, and councils, and other public agencies in the state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to these agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so they may retain control over the instruments that they have created. And with that, we will call this meeting to order. And then now for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. And before we begin, we'd like to acknowledge the Aloney people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to our aloney elders, past and present and future, who call this place Aloney Land, the land that Pinole sits upon, their home. We're proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. And with that, Planning Manager Hannam, could we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ouch.
Here.
Commissioner Huey.
Present.
Commissioner Liam Julian.
Present.
Commissioner Bender. Commissioner Martinez. Let the record show that he let us know that he was going to be absent from tonight's meeting. Vice Chairman Is.
Present, and I believe this is also the point where I would note, as usual, my expert communication to my email list about this meeting and other events happening in the city of Pinole this week.
Okay. Chair Sandoval.
Present.
Let the record show that we have six, we have six commissioners and we can take action on, on, on all the items for tonight.
Thank you, Planning Manager Hannam. Our first item is citizens to be heard. The public may address the planning commission on items that are within its jurisdiction and none otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning commissioners may discuss the matter brought to their attention, but by state and law, the Ralph M. Brown Act, action must be deferred to a future meeting. Time allowed is 15 minutes. And we do have one in-person speaker. Kathy, if you could please come to the podium. You'll have five minutes.
On with the planning commission. Good evening. The city of Pinole needs to stop California's pro-housing agenda that is taking us down the rabbit hole financially, structurally, and environmentally. The decisions the city has made are systematically destroying our city, overloading our infrastructures, and gridlocking our streets at an alarming rate, all while wanting us homeowners to pay the price now and in the future. You're taking commercial properties that could generate a stable income and changing it into high-density housing. You're slowly dissolving our commercial sector and adding more financial difficulties, difficulties for the city in the long term. Excuse me. We now have 556 new units in 1.4 mile radius. This brings all new construction to 618 units in Pinole. I see in August that the city is suggesting a mix of ground floor retail space, residential units, and amenities for the vacant Safeway property. No more high-density housing or rezoning in Pinole as of, as for California's quest for so-called affordable housing. Excuse me. What a joke when the state of California states that when applying for Medi-Cal, you are allowed $600 for maintenance needs, which is for food, housing, and clothing for each month. And that anything above this amount is excess and goes towards a share of costs. California is so out of touch with reality is pathetic. The $650 we received in infrastructure money is nothing over the future care for the lifetime of all the new properties and all the new residents upcoming needs. It amounts to just over $1,051.71, 78 cents for each new unit. If we were to buy a single-family home at the $440 per square foot, which is what the current rate is in Pinole, we could purchase one 1,477 square foot home. Don't these figures put a new perspective on a total picture? No cannabis shops in Pinole. Don't sell the integrity of our town out for money. If you insist on continuing down these two avenues, then maybe the town should approve in good faith a three-to-five-story apartment complex or cannabis shop across the street from City Hall at the Vancat grocery store lot. You could actually see then, you can actually then see, feel, and experience the total impact of how your decisions affect us all on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And we also have Nut Grossman. Note, if you can please come to the podium.
So it's my first time here. I am here to ask actually the construction that's going on right now at Apian Way Village, I believe it's called, where they're building 154 units. And we live, I live on, yeah, we live on MN Street and we constantly coming down on Mann and then Apian Way to go to work. The problem is, and then with the school there, I'm concerned about the increase in traffic. There are about five traffic lights, heavy ones, you know, like a quarter of a mile within each other. They don't seem to be in sync. They don't seem to acknowledge, you know, the traffic, rush hour traffic, that kind of thing. And when there are two exits from that construction that goes into Apian Way, and this will be chaos, which already we have chaos there. So I wonder if there is a plan to either sync those traffic lights differently or possibly install, I don't know if that exists here, those intelligent traffic lights who actually monitor the traffic and adjust accordingly. But it would be advisable because this, this will be bad, you know, once the construction is done and people move in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any public or citizens to be heard online?
No one online so far.
All right. And with that, would city staff be able to address the comment about the traffic lights?
The only thing I can add is that, yeah, when the, when, once the project is completed, there will, the county helps the city sync lights. And so, once the project is completed, there probably will be more syncing of the lights. Also, once the, the man, the, the traffic signal at Apian and, yeah, and Mann is operational, because right now it's only three legs, it's not the fourth leg, that'll add another, another caveat to this, to the, to the intersection. So that will help gauge that, because right now there's only a three-way, three-way traffic signal at Mann and, and Apian. So the goal is to, yeah, once all the, once all the signals are up and operational, then we start syncing them. Work with the county and city staff to work in syncing those so that, especially during the peak times, so, and the school time. So that's, that was the plan.
Thank you, Planning Manager Hannam. And do we have any other citizens to be heard online?
No one online right now.
Sounds good. We'll move on to our next item, the meeting minutes. Does anyone on the commission have any questions or comments or requests for modification to the meeting minutes? Do we have a motion to move the minutes? Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Planning Manager Hannam, could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Ouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Huey.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Commissioner Liam Julian.
Yes.
Commissioner Bender. Vice Chairman Is.
Yes.
Chair Sandoval.
Yes.
Motion carries 501 with one exception. Abstention.
Thank you, Planning Manager Hannam. And now we'll move on to our public hearings. At the beginning of each item, the chair will read the description of the product that is stated as on the agenda. City staff will then give a brief presentation on the proposed project. The commission may then ask staff questions about this item. For those items listed at public hearing, the chair will open the public hearing and ask that the applicant wish will miss, will wish, ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation. Those persons in favor of the project will then be given an opportunity to speak, followed by those who are opposed to the project. The application, the applicant will then be given an opportunity for a rebuttal. The public hearing will then be closed and the commission may discuss the item amongst themselves and to ask questions to staff. The commission will then vote to approve, deny, or approve in a modified form, or continue the matter to a later date for a decision. The chair will announce the commission's decision and advise the audience of the appeal procedure. And it looks like we have two items tonight for public hearing. Additionally to note, no public hearings may begin after 11:00 PM. Items still remaining on the agenda after 11:00 PM will be held, held over to the next meeting. And it looks like our first public hearing will be the conditional use permit UP 25-0004, Quick E-Mart alcohol sales. Planning Manager Hannam, do we have a presentation on this item?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Basically, I want to, Uma, and I'm going to mispronounce his name and I apologize for that, Pol Kherid, on behalf of the Quick E-Mart convenience stores requested the city approval of, of a conditional use permit. The applicant is asking for a type 20 liquor license, which is for beer and off-sale, off-site beer and wine only for his Quick Mart located at 1477 Fitzgerald Drive. The property is owned regional commercial within our, within our zoning ordinance. And it's, and it is in a small shopping center, just, just on the other side of Best Buy. The Quick Mart currently exists, is just a full, full, so, hey, I apologize, a full-service convenience store. Maybe it bring, it mostly just has chips. It's a very small location. It's only about 1,300 square feet. It provides some, some quick, some quick treats for the rest of the center that's around it. If you're familiar with that area, there's approximately four or five different business suites that have different businesses within, within the little shopping center. And then the Quick E-Mart is kind of like on the end of the center. The applicant is requesting an approval and off-site consumption sale of beer and wine to further, for further convenience provided to the surrounding community. The applicant has served the community for a short time and is trying to expand his business offerings. He's having, he's having difficulty competing with other convenience stores now that, now that they're allowed to sell alcohol and he's not. And therefore seeks to expand the use by just adding beer and wine to his offerings for the convenience of the customers. The state alcoholic ABC or alcoholic beverage control enforces the licensing of alcohol retailers by the state under section, under section 23958 of the Business and Professional Codes. The type 20 off-site consumption license allows for retail sales of beer and wine. Quick, Quick Mart is required to first obtain a finding of, of a PCN, which is a public convenience necessity finding from the city council, and then may request planning commission approval of a conditional use permit. When a business establishment applies for a new or different onsite sales license, ABC determines if there's an undue concentration of licenses in a particular census tract. The state relies on a ratio of on-sale retail licenses to the population in the census tract to determine if an area is over-concentrated. In this case, ABC considers an undue concentration or over-concentration to be present if there are more than five onsite sales types within the census tract of 3630. And just, just to remind the commission that the census tract isn't just in the city. I mean, this 3630 extends outside of the city limits. So these census tracts are pretty big in nature. And so, so as the chart shows, there's actually two of them that are outside of the city of Pinole to tell you how big the, the census tract is. It includes the portions of Pinole on the south side of Interstate 80 and west of Apian Way. According to ABC, there are currently 11 existing active off-site licenses in the census tract. Five of those are outside of the city limits. Actually, only three of them are outside the city limits. Table one below includes a complete list of the existing businesses with off-site consumption alcohol sales licenses within the tract as of October 2025. Section 17.59 of 030B of the Pinole Municipal Code designates the city council as the approving authority for the public convenience necessity request and requires a PCN determination as a prerequisite for a planning commission consideration of a conditional use permit for alcohol sales. The council, should the council decide not to approve a determination of the PCN, Quick E-Mart would not be able, be eligible to request a CUP for alcohol sales. It will not, will not be allowed to obtain the type 20 alcohol license through ABC. However, the city council at its regular meeting on October 21st, 2025, adopted a resolution approving the public convenience necessity for Quick E-Mart for their type 2020 license. As part of, as, as part of the business offerings, Quick E-Mart is applied for the type 20. Again, it requires, acquires review of the planning commission. As part of the review, the, the review process, there are three PMC sections, 17.59, which is alcohol sales. That's a separate code, a separate section within our code that require, has certain requirements for alcohol sales. And so I've kind of outlined those in the staff report, 17.59030, which is basically the conditional use permit portion of the code as part of the PCN and as well as findings that needed to be made as part of this project. The planning commission shall review all conditional use permit requests for proposed alcohol sales. And the following, the following information must be provided to approve conditional use permit requests. Basically, a list of establishments within 1,000 feet radius with a similar size and an array of products. If there is any other establishment other than the food service establishment with incidental service of beer and wine within a 1,000-foot radius of the site of the proposed use. Is, that is in the same category of alcoholic beverage sales or service. The city Penole shall not approve the application unless it makes all the following findings of public convenience and necessity. And of course, based on the finding above, there are establishments within the one-thousand feet of this establishment. A determination of the public convenience or necessity is required for the project, which the city council approved, again, as I stated, on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The number of businesses having authority to sell alcoholic beverages in the census tract. Uh, staff response is A-B-C has indicated that there is an undue over-concentration of off-site, uh, public convenience necessity and a public convenience is required. Uh, again, again, the, the Penole, the city council approved the ter- determination, uh, which satisfy, which satisfies the requirement for alcohol, for the alcoholic beverage control, to provide a license. Uh, finding three, to the extent that the crime reporting district in which the applicant is located exceeds the average for crime reporting districts subject to the jurisdiction of Penole Police Department. Uh, formal review by the PD has determined that crime reporting for the district does not exceed the average for crime reporting districts. And in fact, due to the location and the, and the, and the size of this convenience store, um, the police department felt that it, um, that, uh, it di- it didn't raise any objections or concerns related to alcohol sales requests. The proximity of applicants to schools, parks, and playgrounds, recreational cities, using, I use the CC maps, uh, GIS systems. And there are no schools or parks and playgrounds within the thou- within, within a s- within the proximity of this, of this, um, of this project. There are, however, uh, six establishments located along Fitzgerald Drive that are within fifteen hundred feet of the proposed projects. Includes Target, Bedmo, Lucky's, uh, Food Max, Anavi Shell, and Penole Vista Liquors. Um, all of these, all of these, all of these stores are, are just, uh, when you measure them, this is measured as the crow flies, not necessarily how you drive and get to them. So they're well above the fifteen hundred feet, feet there, uh, based on that. Uh, the seventeen point five-nine oh-three-oh, the public convenience necessity I've already discussed. In terms of the over-concentrations, council already, uh, the council approved that and required, and, and adopted the required, that the five findings must be met to approve the public convenience, which they did. Um, but as a part of this attachment C, there's also findings for the conditional use permit. And so, with that, uh, finding number one, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plans and all applicable provisions of this title. Uh, the subject property is consistent with the general plan and specific zoning of the Pen- Penole Municipal Code. Uh, the applicant submits this CUP application to request approval for the sale of just beer and wine, located at fourteen seventy-seven Fitzgerald Drive in the city of Pinole. The site is an existing convenience store operating, within an existing shopping center, operating from seven AM until ten PM, Monday through Sunday. Uh, and is located n- next to Interstate eighty in the regional commercial zone. The subject property is commercial use with an area designated for general commercial land use. The proposed alcohol sales hours would be from seven AM to ten PM, as allowed by the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Alcoholic Beverage Control allows the selling of alcohol from six AM to following two AM the next morning. So that's as well within, there have been no changes that are being requested with this application to the premises or the footprint. Um, or its current operations, other than that the applicant's request to add the, the incidental sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. So they're not adding any, they are just, they are using existing coolers for their beer and they're ex- they're using existing shelving for, for the little wine that they carry. Um, so there is no additional, no additional fixtures or coolers that are needed to supply, uh, for this. Um, the establishment maintenance or operation for the use applied will not, under the circumstances, particular case, location size be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morale, comfort, or general welfare of the persons residing, re- residing or working in the neighborhood. The proposed use will not adversely affect the welfare of the relevant community. The premises have continuously been operated for commercial use, and the Quick E-Mart has been there for the last few years. There is an existing business that provides most goods and services, uh, that have come to be expected from a s- very small convenience store. The request to add a small amount of beer and wine sales will better serve the needs of its customers and will allow the existing grocery inventory to better service customers. And just, just diminishing the need for customers to travel to multiple, multiple locations to retrieve all necessary items. In fact, it, where, where this is located, uh, like I said, there's most of the business, most of the commercial uses around it are service-oriented business. Like I said, nail suppo- nail salons, hair salons, hairs, barber shops, uh, maybe a professional office. So people that are, that are coming for a trip will actually have a better opportunity to make that simple trip right next to the, to the community, to the center. Um, the property's subject is commerc- is a commercial use within the area designated for general commercial. An approval for adding the incidental sale of beer and wine would ensure the applicant's ability to continue providing this desired convenience to the surrounding community. Uh, finding three, that the site of the proposed use is physically suitable for the type, density, and intensity. The site, the site of use is physically suitable for the request addition, an exhilara- an exhilaratory amount of beer and wine sales for off-site consumption. The sale of beer and wine for, which is, while incidental to the overall goods and services provided by Quick E-Mart, is an important aspect in maintaining the ability to act as a full-service convenience store. The convenience store occupies a footprint of approximately thirteen hundred square feet, and the entire property encompasses approximately two-point-five-two acres. So it's a very small piece of, of that bigger parcel. Uh, the proposed addition of beer and wine would not physically impact the site. It would not, would only represent an addition to some items to the store's already existing shelves and coolers. The continued operation of the store with strict adherence to the imposed conditions, proper management and supervision will continue to provide a retail service that is beneficial, convenient, and necessary for the community. As a result, the proposed use will not require physical alteration of the applicant's property, and no additional construction is proposed at this time. And four, it will not be contrary to the specific intent clauses, development regulations, or performance standards established for the zoning district in which it is located. Proposed use and relative, rela- related structures are compatible with and other land uses, transportation, services, facilities in the vicinity. Um, pretty much, the applicant is located in a regional commercial zone district per the city zoning code. Sites in the regional commercial zoning district are intended to serve as large regional shopping centers, serving the West County market area. High-density commercial retail is encouraged, as a, as is a diversity of secondary uses such as toy stores, hotels, and restaurants. All geared toward meeting the needs of both residents and the employees of the existing center, as well as capturing business from travelers of nearby Highway eighty. Uh, the applicant's business is aimed at both functions. The grocery items sold in the convenience store serve residents who want to purchase food items and other goods offered by, uh, the other establishments in the Fitzgerald Drive corridor. Uh, allowing for an expansion of items to include beer and wine would be keeping in with the requirements of the regional commercial zone. By expanding the diversity of goods and services offered to customers throughout the region. As well as improving the local convenience by reducing the number of trips required by residents who want to make a quick and simple shopping trip or impulse buy. Additionally, the feeling portion of the business attracts customers from the freeway to the larger development areas and as part of the Penole Vista shopping centers. Uh, as part of the conditions of approval, as part of section seventeen point five-nine oh-four-oh, um, the code outlines conditions that are required to be in the conditions of approval as part of, a part of this project. Um, you, I've listed those conditions below, I'm not gonna go all through all of them, but there are applicable standard conditions of approval for alcohol sales establishments. All of those are within the conditions of approval, uh, for the, the applicable standard conditions, as well as the off-sale conditions, uh, as well. Those are also included as part of, as, part of the code that need, that are required to be in the conditions of approval. Um, the main thing is, is that all employees shall receive responsible training, beverage training. I think that's gonna be very important, uh, and any employee, uh, on duly between ten PM and two AM, which this, this business is closed between those hours, so. But if they were to expand those hours, uh, will be at least twenty-one years of age. And documentation, this training shall be retained on premises and made available upon request. So with that, uh, with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution twenty-five oh-nine, approving type forty-one beer and wine license for a Quick E-Mart located at fourteen seventy-seven Fitzgerald Drive. If you have any questions, the staff will be happy to answer those. The applicant is here tonight, so he would be able to answer any questions regarding the, uh, regarding the store itself, so, um, with that, that ends my presentation.
Thank you, Plan Manager Hanam, and with that, we will move to questions from the commission to staff. Commissioner Bender, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions, so I will have some comments with the items under the, uh, exhibit A. Conditions of approval three and seventeen are, um, redundant, but.
Thank you, Commissioner Ouch?
Uh, no questions at the moment.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
None at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Heary?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chairman Niss?
A few questions. First off, this application is for a type twenty, uh, off-premises sale license, not a type forty-one, uh, on-premises consumption license, correct? Okay, because the first sen- sentence of the staff report says a type forty-one license, and everywhere else it says type twenty, so just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, type twenty, type twenty license.
Okay, and secondly, let's see which of these fall under questions rather than comments. I guess one question I have is, given that the applicant's hours, as listed as a conditions of approval, don't go past ten PM or before seven AM. Are the conditions of approval that trigger on things happening in those time periods necessary for this application?
Uh, you're probably talking about the locking of the coolers and i- of those, is that, is, are those the ones you're talking about, the in-between, the hours of ten, uh, two and six?
Yeah, condition twenty-five and condition twenty-seven on page thirty-seven of the agenda packet.
Yeah, they, um, they will still need to figure out how to, to lock those, even though they're not gonna be there. Um, so they'll, um, they'll need, they'll need to do that, even though they're not gonna be in the store, per se.
Alright, that's all my questions for staff on this item, thank you.
Thank you, and back to myself, I did have a few questions. Um, first one was, there, I've visited this, uh, the shopping center and I've noticed that there has been a lot of trash overflow in the trash receptacles in this area. So I'm wondering if that is, would that be under the, the general shopping center? Or would the applicant be responsible for, for those as well?
Well, most of the trash, cause I think the whole center uses the trash, so that's more of a, that'd be more of a code enforcement on the, on the, on the trash receptacles themselves. But they would, they would be responsible for their trash and make sure that their trash is taken care of in a, in a, in a, in a clean fashion, I mean. So, yeah, but, but most of the centers, most of the centers, the trash is geared towards the whole center, not just one particular business.
Right, right. Um, and then the second question that I had was, I've noticed that, you know, we've had a, um, we have two alcohol sales licenses tonight. And we've approved quite a few over the past few months, and I'm just wondering if, would we get in trouble with A-B-C? Or would they ever put a, or would we, would we be close to be getting a moratorium on alcohol licenses anytime soon?
I mean, the A-B-C is lo- well, I mean, the, the one thing is, we have the public convenience necessity clause within our, within our code. So that kind of, that kind of allows us to, if there is an overdue concentration, to kinda, to go about that. However, A-B-C can always come in and feel if there are, if there's an oversaturation and the city's not, you know, doing, they could come in and put a moratorium on us for no more liquor licenses. But I'll have to refer to the attorney on this one, I'm glad she's here tonight, uh, so, uh, but because we have the PCN process, that allows us to operate in a more, in a free, uh, for a, a freer manner in this regard.
Go ahead if you'd like.
Yeah, so the, um, the PCN would allow for the exception within kind of the concentrated area specific. A-B-C provides that oversight when they're looking at this particular, uh, project, but they would also look at overall city, um, uh, concentration. So, I don't have an exact number for you or bright line rule of when that might come, but there certainly is that possible oversight.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, that would be all my questions, and are there any other questions from the commission? No, alright, and now we'll move, if the applicant would like to make a presentation in support. Yes, you can please, please come to the podium.
I am no good English, so he's going to.
If you can, on the mic, please.
Hi, I'm Su-Jan, but I'll be, uh, speaking on his behalf.
Yes, what did the question?
Did, did you wanna make a presentation in support, or any comments in support?
Um, yeah, so, um, he's been running this business, um, um, having the beer and, uh, wine license will help, uh, compete with the surrounding market for him. Um, also, this is basically his lifeline, because he's also, uh, taking care of, uh, his daughter, which is his main source of income from, from the business. And, um, his daughter is also fighting cancer at the time, so, um, that's what he wanted to kind of present to you guys for, for the support.
Thank you. Are there any comments in opposition? Do we have any other public comments on this item?
Uh, no hands raised online at this point.
Thank you, and with that, we will move it back, we'll close the public hearing and move it back to the commission. Um, Commissioner Lam Julian, any comments or any comments on this item?
Just one, um, comment, just, um, just echoing, um, Chair Sandoval's comment about, we've had several, um, permits coming up now. Um, requesting again, just more context of the formal review by the police department. What is the average crime? I mean, just, just so we have a baseline to understand what that means for like, the community member, what, what does that actually mean? Um, and then what are they using to make this determination? Again, just what is the matrix, what is the threshold for the average? If the police department could please, um, provide that, so then, we better understand and the community better understands how the decisions are made. Um, just as a lemon person, um, and that completes my comment, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Heary?
No comment, thank you.
Vice Chairman Niss?
A few comments. First, of course, there's the obvious comment that, you know, it's ultimately the council's decision on whether to issue a finding of public convenience or necessity. And they decided to do that as a consent calendar item, so they didn't see it as being even particularly controversial. I wouldn't like to see at some point in the future, a breakdown of average crime rates over the city associated with these applications. Because I know there's been discussion of that on this commission in the past. But I think just having that as a data point would be helpful for the commission and for the community as a whole, to get a better sense of where there's crime and where there might be potentially more issues with crime. Based on the applicant's submission, basically, the handwritten notes. I don't think that the raw quantity of alcohol sold is likely to create a disturbance to public health or anything along those lines. But I do see the, my fellow commissioners' point that over time, there'd be a, be a broader accumulation of sales. I have a few comments with regards to the particular conditions of approval, and I think this is the appropriate time for them. On page thirty-four of the agenda packet, condition number five. It states, "A copy of the conditions of approval will need to be kept on premises and available on request." Will need to be kept seems more conditional than a lot of the rest of our conditions that we have there. I, I would suggest we maybe change that to be shall be kept. And then, condition number six says, "All staff within ninety days of employment receive." And I think there should be a will in between employment and receive, so that it reads, "All staff within ninety days of employment will receive responsible beverage service training." That's more of a typographical comment.
What, what commis- what, what condition was that?
Condition number six on page thirty-four again, the first sentence.
Okay.
Between the. Sixth and seventh words there, yeah. Then, let's see. On page number thirty-six of the agenda packet, uh, condition number eighteen, where, with, uh, removal of all trash on a daily as-needed basis. Given, as was mentioned by Chair Sandoval earlier, the shared responsibility of the trash receptacles being emptied by the overall complexes, cleaning facility, is that actually something within the applicant's power to maintain the trash receptacles being removed regularly?
Probably not, uh. Probably not, um, now that I think about it. But we should, um, but if there is, if there's type of overflow, he needs to at least contact the, contact the, the waste hauler and say, hey, there, our trashes are overflowing and we need a dump or something of that nature. Even though they probably have regular, they probably have regular days and days that they come and pick up the trash. And we had this, we had kind of this problem at Penola Vista. This might be a property owner deal than a, than a business owner, so, um, but we still want him to be able to maintain the trash and ma, make sure that he's not, he's not, he's not one of the causes. So that's kind of why that, that condition's in there.
Right.
But if you want to strike it, the, no problem striking that condition.
I think we might want to modify that condition rather than strike it. Add something along the lines of operators of the business shall take all reasonable efforts to have the property owners maintain, remove all trash on a regular and as needed basis, because it's not within their power in particular, but they could still ask.
Might I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
Because you would be imposing conditions on the business owner and the property owner by that statement. Maybe something to the extent of those receptacles within the business owner's control, right? I think you're trying to designate, uh, those receptacles that the property owner is operating or in control of or owns, fill in the blank.
Yeah, because the, the applicant could have their own, the applicant could have their own, like outside their business or something of that nature, which they would need to keep, keep going, keep cleaning all that, so.
That's not really a legal opinion, just a suggestion. Just to make the distinction between putting a condition that would be imposed on the property owner and not the business operator, which is intent here by the commission.
Right, because I realize that the property owner is not before us tonight. So just maybe instead change it to say trash receptacles under the control of the applicant shall be, shall have all trash removed on a daily and as needed basis. That might balance the concerns there. And then, condition number nineteen. So wording on that feels a little bit odd to me, it says the applicant shall be responsible for maintaining the area free of litter, which is fine. And then it says that area in front of and adjacent to the premises over which they have control. So it seems like there's a missing preposition or something there. Like it should maybe read that area which is in front of and adjacent to the premises over which they have control, feels.
We'll, we'll massage that condition.
Yeah. Don't have an objection to the intent of the condition, it just feels a bit odd in terms of wording. And then, I guess, condition number twenty-five seems like it's partially two different conditions. One is all employees shall receive responsible beverage service training, and the other is any employee on duty between the hours of ten PM and two AM, which I don't think there would typically be, given that the hours of operation for the store end at ten PM, unless this condition is also intended to include employees that are present when the store is not open to the public, is that the case?
No, the case is basically that if, if they were to, because there's, there's a distinction between, if you sell, if you sell alcohol between ten and two, you must be twenty-one, you're twenty years, twenty-one years of age. So it is, every, so all deploy, so basically it is a two-part. One, the employees all have to have the training. And two, uh, between ten and two will be at least twenty-one years of age. I, I'm assuming that if, if he comes back to the commission within a year or two and wants to expand his hours, that that condition is all, in a men, the conditional use permit, that, that's already in there, that's already there. And it's, and it's, it's already implied that, that anybody between ten and two, anyone between ten PM and two AM must be twenty-one years old of age to be able to sell.
Alright, and one more comment, again on page thirty-seven, condition number twenty-six. Make attempts to limit alcohol-related problems which negatively impact those living or working in the neighborhood. Who is making attempts, is it the applicant, is it the city?
Yeah, it, no, it's the applicant, just to make sure that, you know, that, that if he is selling alcohol, that, you know, if he's got some problems within his, in front of his business, that he takes the necessary, that he's required to take the necessary actions, whether it's call the police, tell them to keep, move on, whatever it is to, so that there's, there's no trouble within, with, with, uh, near the facility.
Okay, then I would suggest adding the applicant shall to the start of condition twenty-six to make that clearer. Because right now I don't think it is. And that's all my comments for now, thank you.
Commissioner Bender. Commissioner Bender, your microphone.
Number three and number seventeen are basically repetitive.
Yeah, we'll, we'll delete number seventeen.
Perfect, because the other one, uh, in terms of enforcement monitoring includes both police and community development, so that makes sense. I do agree with, uh, what Commissioner Menace says, I would think in going forward for any of these, um, type twenty and maybe even twenty-one, we should see some more information from the police department regarding any past crime issues in other locations.
What, what I might do is, I might just, I might ask the police to come up, because like, like when we had the last one, and that's what's coming to my memory right now, there was a lot of discussion of, of how, where the crimes were being committed. So like, for example, there's a crime committed at a traffic stop in front of fourteen seventy-seven Fitzgerald, then that was the address that they used to, to, to do the crime, or to, to locate the crime, the person in particular. So, um, we can, I'll, I'll see, I'll talk to the chief and see if we can put something together that would tell you guys how they measure crime or what the, on a total, total package. Because we're going to continue to have businesses that want to sell alcohol. And, you know, if we're saying that, i- i- if we can be sure that, let's say, and I'll, and I'm going to, uh, use your business, I apologize, but to say that, you know, you know, he has seven robberies in the last three, in the next three weeks because of the beer and wine, okay, well then that's, that's, that's a problem. But if, if only there's one crime within the whole corridor, you know, is that, is that an uptick? One more crime, is that an uptick in crime? So I think I'm going to, that, we need to talk to the police department of what, what we should be looking at in terms of what would, what would declare a, an uptick in crime? Or, you know what I mean, what, how to define that? Because that's kind of, that's in the conditions, it's in the staff report, it's in the findings. You know, maybe we can get a better idea of what that is. So I'll talk to chief and see if I can't maybe get a presentation or, or have her come to the commission or one of the commanders come to the commission and kind of explain that process and how they measure and, and how they, and how they do that. I think that, that might be beneficial for the commission. Because we will see more of these licenses as businesses come and go. I mean, even, even businesses that are in the same area, that if they leave, uh, if they leave one area and another business comes in and they have to get a new license, it has to come before the commission. So this is going to be an ongoing, an ongoing thing over and over. So if we have a night, a better idea of what, of how the police see as upticking crime or what could cause the crime, then we can go from there. So if that's something that the commission would like to have, I can work, work with the chief to try to get some, come, something here.
I'm not going to speak for the rest of the commissioners, but I think that, for myself, that would be very helpful, I think. Because there is a sensitivity in terms of these licenses amongst segments of the population. Um, my final comment is I'm going to answer, uh, provide something of an answer to the chair regarding, uh, type twenty licenses in the ABC. From my reading, from the prior me, uh, meeting that we had on this topic, ABC in twenty twenty-three reviewed, um, both for counties and, and cities, the type twenty licenses. With the goal of using a very simple formula of taking the population of the city, not census tract, but the municipality, and divided by twenty-five hun, or twenty-five hundred, and San Francisco uses a different number. But they, uh, they did that in twenty-three, and San Pablo, Pleasant Hill and Albany, which are adjacent cities, those were placed under a moratorium for type twenties, uh, based on that simple formula. The counties were not, but that only applied to those cities, and there are other cities also under that. So currently, I guess we have about five now according to the ABC, the latest. And this will be number six, and if you do the numbers, it's actually, it comes out seven point five. So, the next review will be in twenty twenty-eight. They do it every five years based in some nineteen eighties or nineties law that was passed. And that's it.
Thank you, thank you for your clarification on that, it's very helpful and insightful. Commissioner Uch.
Yeah, I like, um, echo the point of more transparency on the crime data by the police department, I think that is very important, especially, it, it is pretty vague of like, we as the police department, um, just think crime is pretty low. And I think having clear data points that especially are, which is important, is being publicly available. Because even looking for, I would say as example of like, crime statistics, statistics can be quite a lot of time, time-consuming, especially going through FBI databases on specific cities, could be quite the hassle, and it would, it would be nice to have the, at least hard to police department here have more transparency of like, how they gathered the data. Or at least have it be more presentable and accessible for the public, not just for us as a commission. So I appreciate the call for more transparency on, on that part, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Uch, and I did have some comments on some of the conditions of approval. As it also had been mentioned, condition three, I think, with condition seventeen. I also think condition six is also very, very similar to condition twenty-five. So I think if anything, we would make, just probably just combine these. And then there was another one, I also think condition thirteen is pretty duplicate, very similar and duplicative as condition twenty-three. And then, I think that would be about it for me. Yeah, if now we can go, if there's any other discussion on these conditions, and then we can craft a motion, a motion as a commission. Yes, Vice Chairman.
A few things, first, I agree with the overall overlap between condition number thirteen and condition number twenty-three, I'm guessing that the reason for that is that one of that was written by the police department and one of that was written by the community development department, and so they've got slightly different priorities. The police department just wants there to be a program, the community development department wants a method to assure cooperation. So that's a little bit stronger, seems like to me. I'm not as sure that condition number six and condition number twenty-one are duplicative.
It's a condition twenty-five, not twenty, not twenty-one.
Twenty-five, right, my apologies. Because six says that it, the training details will be included as part of the complaint response slash community relations. It's not entirely clear what that is within the condition itself. But twenty-five says documentation will be retained on the premises and be made available on request, which seems a fair bit clearer.
Okay, in that case, would you rather keep twenty-five than remove twenty-six?
I think either remove six or clarify what, quote, complaint response slash community relations, end quote, is. And then finally, I would note in response to Commissioner Bender's comment about the overall calculation of license limits, that if it is the case that basically the denominator is the total population of the city, that increasing the total population in the city by say, having higher density housing may permit increased commercial development in the city by increasing the size of that denominator allowing for more licenses to be awarded over time, something for the public perhaps to consider.
Were there any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Lam Julian.
So just speaking to condition six and twenty-five, if you combine them, or just to, to get rid of, to omit six, add the language that within ninety days that they have the training. So if we're going to strike that, just to make it clean, that in ninety days you have this, this is, um, between these hours, and then you have those records, um, available on request. And I guess this is more of a comment. What is the community, response community relations program? If the police department could add that to their presentation along with the matrix?
I think it's just a part of the, I think it's just part of the alcohol training, um, but I'll, but I'm not positive, so I'll have to, I'll have to find out what that is.
And then one other comment, um, for table one, and then the other table. Instead of grocery outlet, I think it should be, it's Lucky's, right? Okay, just checking, okay, I am complete, thank you.
Thank you, and then any other comments on the conditions of approval? Do we have a motion?
I'll move that the planning commission adopt resolution twenty-five dash zero nine with the attached exhibits and conditions of approval with the following modifications to the conditions of approval. That condition number seventeen be struck. That condition number five be modified to change the wording from will need to be kept to shall be kept. That condition number six be struck. That condition number twenty five be modified to include the language from condition six on within ninety days of employment in the first sentence. For condition number eighteen, that it be modified to note that all trash be removed from receptacles that are under the control of the applicant. And then, condition number nineteen, adding in the words which is between that area and in. And for condition number twenty-six, adding the words the applicant shall to the start of the condition. And are there any other modifications to the conditions? Alright, then that's my motion.
I'll second that. Liam Andrew Hanam, could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Uch.
Yes.
Commissioner Huey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lam Julian.
Yes.
Commissioner Bender.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Menace.
Yes.
Chair Sandoval.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, and just as a note, um, any person may appeal the action of the planning commission or the planning manager by filing an appeal with the city clerk in writing within ten days of such action. Following a public hearing, the city council may act to confirm, modify or reverse the action of the planning mission, and the planning commission may act to confirm, modify or reverse the action of the planning manager. The cost to appeal decision is five hundred dollars with a minimum two thousand five hundred dollar deposit fee. Please note, if you challenge the decision of the commission regarding a project in court, you'd be limited only to raising the issues that you or someone else had to raise at the public hearing or in writing delivered to the city council at or prior to the public hearing. And with that, we will move to our next public hearing, conditional use permit UP twenty-five dash zero 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 six, Yoshushi alcohol sales. Planning Manager Hanam, do we have a presentation on this item?
Yes, I do, ditto to everything, no. Just, uh, it's, it's from Hi Lam Chil, Chil. On behalf of Yoshushi, he's requested the city approval to seek a conditional use permit to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption at its sit-down restaurant located at twenty-four thirty-two San Pablo Avenue. Yoshushi aims to improve the dining experience by offering beer and wine pairings with its Japanese cuisine. Representatives from Yoshushi have stated that providing alcohol will give them greater convenience for customers who want to enjoy alcoholic beverages while dining. The state department of ABC regulates licenses under section twenty-three nine five eight. A type forty-one license allows restaurants to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption with meals. The applicant was required to, to obtain, first obtain a PCN from the city council or a public convenience necessity, and then a conditional use permit from the planning commission. When proposing all new licenses, onsite licenses, ABC assesses a census tract for an undue concentration. ABC identified more than five type forty-one licenses. Uh, ABC identified more than five type forty one licenses as an indicator of an undue concentration. Uh, according to ABC records, there are currently twelve active onsite alcohol licenses in the track. Uh, most of those are onsite full alcohol licenses. There's about, it's about six and six is a matter of. Uh, for which, uh, which, uh, the spirits, or if you say full alcohol, that's a type forty seven license. So that as you can see, there are approximately, it's table one indicates there's approximately one, two, three, four, five, six. Six, seven, uh, full type forty seven licenses and one, two, three, four, five, six onsite beer and wine. And this would make seven, so it'd be an even number, uh, seven and seven of the two different license types. Uh, the, if approved, Yoshushi would be the sixth restaurant in the area to offering beer and wine. Aligning with the character of the restaurant and customer expectations along San, the San Pablo Avenue corridor. Uh, once an undue concentration is identified by ABC, the local governing body may choose to allow additional alcohol sales establishments in an area. Where there is an over concentration by determining a public convenience or necessity, or we call it PCN. As stated, as said before, that's section seventeen point five nine oh three of our municipal code. Designates the city council as the approving authority for the PCN request and requires a PCN determination. As a prerequisite for the planning commission consideration of a conditional use permit for onsite beer and wine sale and consumption. Should the city council decide not to approve a determination of a PCN, Yoshushi would not be able to be eligible to request a CUP for alcohol sales. And would, and will not be allowed to obtain a type forty one license through the ABC for its proposed onsite consumption sales. And since this track thirty five ninety one point oh three. City council at its regular meeting on October twenty first adopted a resolution approving the findings required by seventeen, by section seventeen point five nine oh three OC. Since the resolution has been adopted, the project may move forward with the conditional use process portion to be heard by the planning commission, and that's why we're here tonight. Uh, as part of the review and analysis in terms of the alcohol sales. Uh, our code requires that, um, it goes through the review process. Uh, consistent with chapter seventeen point five nine alcohol sales. Uh, as our review process, there are three criteria seventeen five nine oh three O A through C, uh, is the criteria for that. Um, A seventeen point five nine seventeen point five nine oh three O is the conditional use permit. And then we should, the planning commission shall review all conditional use permits requests for proposed alcohol sales. Uh, a list of all establishments within a thousand feet radius with a similar size and array of products. Um, if, uh, there is any other establishment other than a food service establishment. With incidental service or beer and or wine within a thousand feet foot radius onsite of the proposed use. That is in the same category of the alcohol beverage sales or service, the city penal shall not approve the application unless it makes all the following findings of public convenience and necessity, which we did. Uh, as part of the city council adoption of the resolution on October twenty first, twenty twenty five. Again, the number of businesses having authority to sell alcoholic beverages in the census tract of the applicant. Uh, ABC has indicated that there is an over, over concentration of alcohol licenses in census tract thirty five nine one oh three. Uh, due to the over concentration, a PCN is required, uh, which the council approved on October twenty first, twenty twenty five. Uh, for alcohol sales where there is an over concentration in the census tract. Again, to the extent to which the crime reporting district in which the applicant is located exceeds the average for crime reporting districts. Subject to the jurisdiction of the penal police department. Uh, formal review was done by the police department and determined that crime reporting for the district does not exceed the average for crime reporting districts. Police department did not raise any objections or concerns related to alcohol sales requests for this business. Uh, the proximity of applicant to a school, park, playground, using the GIS count, the CI, CC map county GIS system, there is one park and one youth center within three hundred feet of the restaurant. Yoshushi is located in the Parkview Plaza in the downtown area with multiple businesses that serve alcohol. Those businesses include Bill's Liquors and the Soul Fried Chicken, other establishments adjacent to Yoshushi that serve alcohol are Antlers, Tina's Place, Pear Street Bistro, and the Diosa Restaurant. The public convenience and necessity, of course, have I mentioned before, uh, when there is over concentration, again, that's. That's responded by the city adopted, the, the city council adopted the public convenience necessity finding. And require that the five findings must be met and approved, uh, per the necessary findings. Attachment three of this report outlines the findings that were made for the project. Findings for the conditional use permit, uh, staff proposed is it consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plans and all applicable provisions of the title? Now, the subject property is consistent with the general plan, specific plan and specific zoning of the municipal municipal code pursuant to the three corridors. And pursuant to the three corridor specific plan, table six point two, the applicant submits. Uh, this conditional use permit application to request approval for the sale of beer and wine. Um, the site is an existing restaurant with, within the Parkview Park Plaza operating from four thirty PM to eight thirty PM on Mondays. Eleven thirty AM to two fifteen PM, and then a split shift from five thirty, five to eight thirty PM Tuesday through Saturday, and they are closed on Sundays. The subject property is commercial use within an area designed for a commercial mixed use zone district. The proposed alcohol sales hours would be during operating hours as allowed by the State Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. And there are no changes that are being requested with this application to the premises, footprint, or its current operations. Other than the applicant's request to add the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption. Uh, the, the establishment maintenance finding two, this establishment is of operation of the use. Uh, will not, under the circumstance, a particular case, location, size, design, operating characteristics be detrimental to the health. Safety, peace, morale, comfort, or general welfare persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such use, the general welfare of the city. Uh, the proposed use will not adversely affect the welfare of the relevant community. The premise has been continuously been operated as a restaurant for the last couple of years. Yoshushi has been there for the last few months, operating without a liquor license. This is an existing business that provides food and services that have come to be expected from a small restaurant. The request to allow the sell beer and wine will better serve the needs of its customers and will allow the customers to have a full range of drink opportunities. Similar to all the other restaurants within the Parkview Plaza, uh, within the Parkview Plaza and adjacent restaurants. The subject property is commercial use within an area designated for general commercial mixed land uses. Approval of adding the sale of beer and wine would ensure the applicant's ability to continue providing this desired convenience to their existing customers. The proposed site is physically suitable for the requested addition of an accelerated amount of beer and wine sales for the consumption with meals. The proposed addition of beer and wine would, would not physically impact the site and would not only represent additional beverages offered. The continued operation of this restaurant will, with strict adherence to the imposed conditions, proper management and supervision. Will continue to provide restaurant services that are beneficial, convenient, and necessary for the community. And as a result, the proposed use will not require physical alterations of the applicant's property and no additional construction is proposed at this time. Uh, in terms of finding number four, it will be, it will not be contrary to the specific intent clauses, development regulations, or performance standards established for the zoning district. In which it is located, the applicant is located in the commercial mixed use zoning designation per the three corridor specific plan. The existing site is located within an existing shopping center within the downtown corridor. The adjacent land uses are similar in that they are small businesses that either stand alone or within a small center. Transportation facilities, bus stop, parking areas are located throughout the downtown. The proposed project's location is centrally located within those facilities. By allowing the sale of alcohol, Yoshushi, Yoshushi sushi. Uh, can provide an expansion of items to include beer and wine that would be in keeping with the requirements of the commercial mixed use zone. By expanding the diversity of goods and services offered to customers. Uh, with that, the conditions of approval, which in seven, um, in the municipal code seventeen point five nine or four. Five nine point oh four O, these are standard, standard conditions of approval of alcohol sales establishment. Uh, as well as the on sale conditions for, um, uh, for the project. So with that, which all of these conditions are included as part of the conditions of approval for this project. And with that, city staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to approve a conditional use permit for Yoshushi. For a type one forty one license onsite consumption located at twenty four thirty two San Pablo Avenue. And that ends my presentation. Unless you have any questions for staff, I'd happy to be answered those.
Thank you, Plan Manager Hanam. Now we'll move to questions from the commission's staff. Commissioner Uch, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions at the moment.
Commissioner Bender?
No questions.
Vice Chair Menace.
One or two questions, most of my thoughts here are comments, but. Condition number nine on page fifty three of fifty five of the agenda packet is. Unclear. Am I correct in reading it that the eleven thirty AM to two fifteen PM and five PM to eight thirty PM are hours that apply to Tuesday through Saturday? And that Monday is only four thirty to eight thirty?
Yes.
Okay. And it also looks like there's maybe another sentence that's supposed to be at the end there, or is that just a typographical mark?
Uh.
After all, alcohol sales shall end thirty minutes before closing, but there's a space about an I.
There should be, that's a, that's a misprint. There's, that's just a. Yeah, that, that needs to go away.
Comment, comment. And then on the final page of the agenda packet, page number fifty five, the last condition, condition number twenty seven. Planning commission shall remove, review this conditional use permit once a year for the next five years. Is this typically done? I don't recall a previous condition of this sort being imposed.
Yeah, you included as part of the Diosa restaurant conditions of approval, so that was a condition that you wanted to have just based on the, uh, for the restaurants. So, um, if you don't want that condition, you can be stricken, or if you only want to review it once in five years, you can do that. Um, so, uh, either any way, which way you would want to do that.
Well, that would fall under comments, I think. That's all my questions for the side. Thank you.
Commissioner Huey.
Um, on page fifty three and section ten, it reads of the operation of the use results in conflicts pertaining to parking, noise, nuisance, traffic, or other impacts. At the discretion of staff, the use permit may be referred back to the planning commission. And I'm curious to hear, under what circumstances would staff not bring it to the planning commission and what would warrant, um, staff to bring it to the planning commission?
In most cases, they, they would be, it's, it would be more complaint driven. Um, so if we're getting a lot of complaints regarding conflicts pertaining to parking and noise and nuisance or traffic or other impacts. Um, at which point, once depending on what the comments are, what, what they, what is happening over there, then we would bring it back. If we need to, if we can correct it from either a code enforcement perspective or a police perspective, we would do that first. If that isn't, is, if that's not happening, and that's not, if that's not being done, uh, regularly, then we would bring it back to the commission. Meaning there are more issues, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing with code enforcement and police. It's still not kind of not doing what it's supposed to be doing, then we would bring it back to the commission for a revoke of the conditional use permit, which would not allow them to sell alcohol.
That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lam Julian.
No questions at this time. Thank you.
And I do not have any questions on this item. Would the applicant like to give a presentation on this, in support of this item?
I don't think applicant's here. Is the applicant here?
If, or, would you like to come up to the podium and speak in support of this item? Do we have any comments in opposition? Do we have any public comments on this item?
Uh, no comments online at this time.
Right, and with that, looks like we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to discussion on the commission. Um, Commissioner Lam Julian, any comments on this item?
Just one comment, um, asking staff again, um, to reach out to the police department for. Transparency to provide that matrix on how they are determining, um, average crime reporting districts. Similar to the same request from the others. I'm complete. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Huey.
Um, going off of Vice Chair Menace's comment or question about item nine, the way that the hours are read is a little bit confusing for me. I don't know if there's a better way for us to write that. And then, um, for each of the, um, numbers, some of them have periods and some of them don't, and I'd like to see that uniform, please.
Okay.
Vice Chair Menace.
Yes, I'd like to echo, uh, Commissioner Huey's comment about liking the numbering to either have. One period or no periods. Condition number two, ten has two periods and, you know, that's extra vexing. Um, let's see, there are a few conditions that seem to. Either duplicate or be in conflict with condition number one. So going back to page fifty two of the agenda packet. Condition number one seems like the strongest condition. It's saying if any of the conditions are found to be disregarded, the use permit will be subject to revocation. And the business subject to potential closure. If necessary, the planning commission may modify or recommend if a city council revoking the use permit after making applicable findings. So that's basically the very first condition even before the whole harmless one. But then if you go on page fifty three to condition number eleven. It says if use permit commissions are not adhered to, the use permit is subject to subsequent review by the planning commission. Action by the reviewing body may include but are not limited to imposing corrective action for the project to adhere to conditions, modifications to conditions, or revocation of the permit. After giving ten day notice following a public hearing. Which seems like a broader range of options than what condition one permits. And then on page fifty four, condition number sixteen says if any of these conditions are found to be disregarded, the use permit for alcohol sales will be subject for invocation. If necessary, the planning commission may modify the use permit or may revoke the public, or may revoke the use permit after holding a public hearing notice. And making applicable findings. So it seems like. There's both some overlap and some conflict between conditions one, sixteen, and eleven. And then, let's see. Again, on page fifty four, condition number fifteen, I think licensee of its employees of should probably read or there. Um, for condition number seventeen, would it be possible for the police department to have a report out to the planning commission? Or the public more broadly about basically the results of the complaint response slash community relations program? Because I think that might address some of the concerns that my fellow commissioners have raised with regards to accessibility and transparency. For conditions twenty and twenty one, I think both of those should probably have the phrase, the applicant shall added to the start of the condition. More important maybe for condition twenty than for condition twenty one. It's a little bit more clearly implied there. And then I already had my question about condition twenty seven, if we have previous conditions along those lines, I don't have a huge issue with that. I just didn't recall prior conditions like that. Let me go ahead and flip back, make sure I didn't miss anything. And I think that's all my comments on the sign of that present. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Um, my only comment is about twenty seven, because that one did come up with the Elsa. And unfortunately, Commissioner Martinez is not here tonight because he was the one who sort of raised this, um, issue. I think that one really applied to that specific application, as I remember. I just find this reviewing it once a year for the next five years to be rather extreme, especially for a restaurant. So I'm actually kind of troubled about keeping this. That's my only comment.
Commissioner Uch.
No comments.
And yes, I wanted to echo some of the concerns that had been raised around commission one and sixteen. I do think that, you know, I do think that we could probably clean those up and have probably merge sixteen into one. Make sure all the points that we want to hit are in to commit, are in condition one. Um, while also maintaining some of that strong language and.
If I may add, the reason, as I'm reading through the conditions, the reason why some of those conditions are, they sound similar, but they're not. It's because one is that this project is required to come to you every year for the next five years. So you'll be reviewing the conditions. So that's why, like in, like in, like condition one, if any of the conditions are. Uh, to be disregarded, a use permit, or even sixteen, because you will be holding, you will be holding the hearing as part of the review of the conditional use permit. So if you, if you do away with twenty seven, then you probably do away with two of those conditions. Because those, two of those conditions are relevant to condition number twenty seven. Because you are reviewing that, you will be reviewing the application, uh, without, uh. E, uh, every year for the next five years, whether there's good or bad, so you will still be reviewing the, uh, thing. So if you review, you probably could do, if you, if you do away with twenty seven, you could probably do away with the public, I mean, you can always make public. You can always have a revocation hearing if complaints and stuff is driven, and one seems to be pretty, pretty tough. Tough language, but I think that's why when we added twenty seven, those other two conditions came into play. Because we're bringing it to you, and if you feel at the time that we bring it to you as part of a public hearing, then you can make those conditions and findings, then you can take away the quote, take away the use permit. So that's why some of the languages is like that, is because of that.
Yeah, I, I do agree with the Commissioner Bender. I kind of do think it's a little bit excessive how it is. I think I would probably like to see some sort of, I, I like the idea of having some sort of mechanism if the, if like, if complaints are arise, that, you know, then we could revisit it.
And that, and that's within the conditional use, within the entitlement section of our code, a revocation. So if, if there are issues, I can always bring it back as a, as an item, and then and you know, if the commission warrants, then we can bring it back as a revocation in a, in a, in a public hearing to do that. So I have that ability even within the conditional use permit code.
Chair.
Yes.
I would like to ask staff, how many restaurants here in town that have, uh, this type forty-one license are we reviewing every year?
Well, not all of them have conditions of approval, not, conditions of approval that require it. So rather than now, you're not, I mean, you have the ability to review conditional use permits if you, if you like, because it is in the code. Uh, so if the commission wants to request to review these, these conditional use permits, you have the ability to do that. So it's just, they weren't as part of the, they weren't part of the conditions of approval. At least some of them weren't part of the conditions of approval. Like, I don't think Tina's the original restaurant when they had theirs, Antlers, you know, um, tho- those types of, those types of businesses that are prior to two thousand and ten, probably. Because that's when our code really made the big change for alcohol use. Because before it was just a permitted use within the commercial zone district. So really, it's all the businesses that prior to, or, yeah, after two thousand and ten.
I just, I just think it's excessive.
That's right, yeah.
And, um, I'm certain staff knows that if certain businesses, uh, there's complaints from surrounding neighbors, that you hear about it first thing. Again, I think that one, this one came about because it was a specific application on a prior project. In which, um, some of us were having trouble figuring out how you get a restaurant in that building.
Right.
Since there's really no kitchen there, and can't have a kitchen.
Right.
Yes, Vice Chairman.
So in response to Chair Sandoval's comments, I think I'd note that condition number ten in this particular document seems to allow for basically, even if there's not an outright violation of the conditions of approval, just, you know, if the, if the conditions lead to problems, it can get review, referred back to the planning commission for subsequent review. So condition ten seems to address those problems. And personally, I'm of the opinion that condition number eleven is the condition that should be kept over conditions one and sixteen. Because condition eleven is the broadest. It says subject to subsequent review, and then it talks about the different kinds of actions that can be done. Whereas one is just, you know, revoke, and sixteen is again, subject to revocation and then modification maybe. But it definitely seems like it's tilted to, towards being more critical of the applicant in advance compared to condition number eleven.
Yeah, and I can see that. I do generally prefer broader language. That way, you know, that's, gives a little bit more flexibility for enforcement. Um, are there any other comments on this item or any other conditions that we'd like to modify? Yes, Commissioner Lam Julian.
Clarifying question, so keep eleven and remove sixteen, was that the recommendation?
That was my suggestion, strike one, strike sixteen, keep eleven.
Okay, thank you.
I'm open to that.
And then I guess my final thing was, is there some way we could amend the language in nine about the operating hours for it to be clearer? Maybe just move Tuesday through Saturday to the start of that clause?
That's fine, yeah, I mean, those are just, those are the operating hours. If you want to, we can move them around however you want to make them more clear, but those are, those are just the operating hours of the business.
Yeah, because...
Because they have a split shift. The, the thing that's thrown everybody is that on, from Tuesday to, Tuesday through Saturday, they're open for lunch, and then they close, and they open for dinner. So they're not open straight through, so that's kind of, that's probably throwing everybody right now. Um, but I'll, we can re, we can, we can massage that condition to make sure that it's pretty, pretty, uh, pretty easy to, to look at.
Yeah, because I don't have substantive objections to condition number nine, I just have, I guess, typographical objections.
Yeah.
So Vice Chairman, as you said that you wanted to strike, no, not twenty-seven, it was one, and what was the other one you had mentioned?
Conditions one and sixteen, yes.
Maybe keep ten, okay.
Keep ten and eleven, yeah, because ten and eleven are different. Ten's talking about stuff that maybe falls outside of the use permit conditions as they are now, but there's still problems. Eleven fa- talks about the stuff that falls within the use permit conditions. So between them, they cover most stuff.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but also Commissioner Bender was talking about removing condition twenty-seven, so...
Yes.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And I'd be fine with striking condition twenty-seven as well. It seems excessive, especially compared to other similar businesses.
And do we have any other questions on the, or, sorry, any other comments on this item? All right, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt conditional use permit UP twenty-five dash zero zero six, yo sushi alcohol sales with striking condition one and sixteen to be removed, um, condition nine to be rewarded. And so for, rewarded for clarity and removing condition twenty-seven.
And if I may suggest a few additional points, Chair. Condition fifteen, uh, typographical change of of to or. And conditions twenty and twenty-one, adding in the applicant shall to the start of those conditions.
What was the last one?
For conditions twenty and twenty-one, adding the phrase "the applicant shall" to the first sentence of each condition, to make it a bit clearer.
Yes. Okay, do I need to restate the motion, or?
As long as you accept the changes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I accept those changes.
And then there was one other thing. On condition number seventeen, did the commission want to amend that one to have some sort of report-out process, or do we want to leave it as it is?
I think we should probably just leave it as it is and then, um, wait until, you know, we have more inform, we, till we get a report back from the police department.
Okay, so then that's all the modifications I'd like to make to your motion.
Okay, I accept all those changes.
Then I will second the motion.
Planning Manager Hanam, could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Ouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Huey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lam Julian.
Yes.
Commissioner Bender.
Yes.
Vice Chairman is.
Yes.
Chair Sandoval.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Planning Manager Hanam, and also like to note the appeal process, that anybody may appeal the action of the planning commission or the plan mani- planning manager by filing an appeal with the city clerk within ten days of such action. Following the public hearing, the city council may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action that we have taken tonight. And the planning commission may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning manager. The cost of appeal is five hundred dollars, and the minimum two thousand five hundred deposit fee. Please note, if, if you'd like to challenge this, this, the decision of the commission tonight, you'd be limited only to raising those concerns that you or someone else or had been raised during the public rehearing or in the writing delivered to before and the, sorry, the, the meeting. Um, and with that, we'll move on to, we do not have any old business, and moving on to item I, new business, the ADU outreach and implementation intern project presentation. So, city staff, do we have a...
Yes, we do. I would like to introduce, uh, Estrella Silva. She is a community development director and development, uh, intern who worked on our ADU process. Um, she is a master student at UC Davis, uh, majoring in, correct me if I'm wrong, it's environmental policy and management. And, uh, she's done some great work for the city over the last two months, and so, uh, we're, this will be a great presentation, so I'll ta- take it, take it over to Estrella.
Thank you. Um, it's a good evening, Chair Commissioners, city staff, and community members. My name is Estrella Silva, and I've had the privilege of serving as the ADU outreach and implementation intern with the city of Pinole. And tonight I'll be sharing highlights from my work supporting the city's accessory dwelling unit or ADU programs, as well as the progress we've made to make ADUs more accessible and better understood by homeowners in our community. Um, and then to begin, um, I did have a slide presentation. I just want to make sure that that's gonna be up. Okay, great. Um, perfect, all right, um, and then next slide, please. Um, so to begin, I want to give a brief overview of why ADUs matter, not only for Pinole, but for California as a whole. As many of you know, our state continues to face a significant housing crisis. Cities across California are being challenged to provide more housing while maintaining local character and livability. ADUs, small self-contained units located on the same property as an existing home, are effective and flexible solutions to this challenge. They benefit homeowners who can use the unit in different ways to rent for additional income, to provide housing for family members, or simply to create more usable living space. They also benefit renters, since ADUs tend to be smaller and more affordable than traditional housing, which helps to keep local housing costs more manageable. In alignment with the city's regional housing needs allocation, uh, Reno goals, Pinole has a construction target of about five ADUs per year between twenty twenty-three and twenty thirty-one, with a pro- projection of three ADUs per year as a more realistic pace given current trends. And my internship focused on two main goals. One, expanding ADU access through targeted outreach and homeowner support. And two, improving internal workflows and data systems to strengthen the city's ADU program infrastructure. And next slide, please. Over the summer, much of my work involved ar- around organizing, um, and implementing the city's outreach strategies to help residents better understand what ADUs are and how, uh, they can build one, and what resources the city provides. This involved close collaboration with the planning division, as well as with community engagement staff to ensure that residents were aware of new programs like Fast Track ADU program and the Amnesty Program for Unpermitted ADUs. And next slide, please. So outreach ex- execution took many forms, and we worked to meet people where they were, both in person and online. We hosted pop-up events and webinars, and a webinar allowing residents to learn about ADUs in both informal and educational settings. We engaged directly with residents via email and in-person meetings, helping answer questions and where to find resources. We also participated in major community events such as National Night Out and Citizens Academy. And these were excellent opportunities to connect with homeowners and renters in a relaxed setting, have one-on-one, uh, conversations, and distribute, uh, informational materials. And all this was part of the ADU outreach campaign, a citywide effort to make ADUs a household concept and empower residents with practical information. And next slide, please. So I had the chance to explain two key initiative, ADU initiatives. Um, first was the Fast Track program, which streamlined the permitting process for standard ADU designs that meets city requirements, saving time for homeowners. And second, the Amnesty Program, which provides a pathway for property owners with unpermitted ADUs to bring their units into compliance safely and legally. And I was always available for any follow-up questions during these events. And next slide, please. So while not pictured on the slide, uh, much of our digital outreach material will be available, um, on the city website. And also on the city website, there is a yellow button for the, um, ADU and JADU descriptions. I'm sorry, right below the A- ADU and JADU descriptions, that leads directly to the Pinole Speaks ADU Outreach Campaign, which will be closing soon, so that it can be analyzed. And, um, this online presence ensures that even residents who can't attend events can still access accurate city-approved information at any time. And next slide, please. So for me personally, the most rewarding part of this internship was engaging with the public. I genuinely enjoyed being able to answer questions and help people navigate what can often feel like a complex process. And one interesting observation was how event turnout varied. Even with extensive promotion, some events had lower attendance than expected, while others, often tied to larger community gatherings, had far more engagement. And these trends highlight the need for the city to continue to integrate ADU outreach with existing public programs where engagement is already pretty high. And next slide, please. In addition to outreach, I also focused on creating a digital archive of templates and tools for future interns and city staff. And this archive includes things like contact lists, promotional materials, templates, and resources that make it easier to continue and expand ADU outreach efficiently. The goal was to ensure that the progress made this summer isn't just a one-time effort, but something that can continue to grow as part of the city's ongoing housing strategy. And next slide, please. Overall, this internship provided me with a deep appreciation for how local planning directly shapes housing access and community well-being. I've seen how ADUs can serve as an essential bridge between policy and implementation, translating high-level housing goals into tangible, small-scale projects that make a real difference for residents. And it also reinforced how critical clear communication and proactive engagement are to achieving those outcomes. Even the best policies depend on homeowners understanding, on homeowners understanding, um, trusting and participating in them. And from a planning perspective, ADUs represent an opportunity for incremental infill development that supports the city's housing element goals while preserving neighborhood character and sustainability. And next slide, please. Okay, sorry, I think maybe that's, um, so anyway, before I conclude, I wanted to express my sincere appreciation for the planning division, community development staff, and to this commission for your continued leadership in shaping Pinole's housing future. Your work provides the policy foundation that allows programs like these to succeed. I'd also like to thank my supervisors and mentors for their guidance and support throughout this internship. This experience has strengthened my commitment to pursuing a career closely linked to community development, and I am deeply grateful for the opportunity to contribute, however small, to advancing the city's housing goals. And thank you for your time this evening and your continued support for Pinole's ADU initiatives, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for all of your work with the city. We'll now move to questions from the commission. Commissioner Bender.
Well, thank you for your presentation. No questions.
Commissioner Ouch.
Like I said, thank you for the presentation. Um, I, one, I guess, comment would be eventually with, once we're finished with, I guess, the outreach and ADUs and JADU's applications come in, will data be, like, uh, will they be publicly available data on like, the amount constructed so far and approved?
I think that'll depend on the planning division.
Yeah, I could answer that. Um, we document that for, um, the Department of Housing Community Development each year anyways. We report out on how many building permits are issued for housing unit development, and that includes the number of ADUs permitted each year. Um, so we are kind of do that, but we're happy to share that information when it comes to...
So it's publicly available?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, and that's all the questions I have.
Commissioner Lam Julian.
Uh, no questions, but I do want to thank you for your lovely presentation and all the work that you've done for our little city. Thank you.
Commissioner Huey.
No questions, thank you, but do want to share my thanks, and my fellow commissioners have already done.
Vice Chairman.
I'd like to echo my fellow commissioners and thanking Estrella for her work on behalf of the city, and hopefully it helped further her education as well. I do have a few questions. You mentioned towards the end of your presentation, a digital archive being created for future interns. I recognize that more sensitive stuff like contact info might not be publicly shared. But to what extent do you think that the information in the digital archive might be able to be shared with the community more broadly and not just city staff?
So we're already working to put some of the, um, flyers and info that you saw in the presentation into, um, our resources on the webpage.
Great, and then my second question is maybe more for staff, but will this presentation be uploaded, the actual... will this presentation be uploaded, the actual slide deck? Because I noticed it wasn't with the agenda packet.
Uh, yeah, we could, we could upload it and put it on the ADU page as well for further reference.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, and that's all my questions on the side of, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I did actually have a couple of questions, I'm just kind of curious, what was people's engagement like? Like, were they more cur, like, you, you mentioned that people were curious, was it that, like, there was an interest, but they thought that there was some hurdle? Um, just kind of curious what people were saying during those conversations.
Yeah, so people were definitely, um, interested and during the engagement process, it was a lot of, um, just questions about general ADU information. And so I was able to direct them to, um, at first seeing the, some of the flyers that I had. And then once we, uh, created the full ADU webpage, we were able to direct them to that webpage.
Thank you, and then I did kind of have a, another question. Were changes in, uh, the state has been doing a lot of legislation around, like, ADUs. In your opinion, do you think that that's helpful? Um, is it not commu, being communicated effectively or just kind of wanted to hear your thoughts on that?
I think that it is helpful, um, but then again, uh, the city of Pinole has their own, uh, regulations and policies in place. So I think that that's, if you're a resident in Pinole, then you'd have to follow those anyway.
Yeah, and yeah, that would be all my questions from me, and thank you so much for your presentation. And any other questions on the commission? Yeah, all right, and then we'll, are there, is there any public comment on this item?
Um, there's no one online at this moment.
Sounds good, and yeah, I guess that will, there's no further.
No, thank you, Estrella, for your presentation.
Action, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and with that, we will move on to our City Planners and Commissioners Report. Planning Manager Hanam, is there anything you would like to report?
I don't have a lot tonight, um, just, uh, just continuing to work on our odds and our, and our parklet programs. Uh, also, uh, we're in the process of our tribal consultation for the Safety and Environmental Justice Element, so we're, we're doing that process right now. And be able to, we'll be able to adopt the Safety and Environmental Justice Element in, uh, January. So we're excited about that, and then the parklets and odds. We've got a couple more interns that are, that are coming in, working with the city, which has been a great program. It's been a great help to the Planning Division, uh, in getting the odds and the parklet stuff done. So hopefully, this will all come to fruition here by the beginning of next year, so. Um, that's, that's the goal right now, so other than that, that's all I have. Unless you have any questions of staff, I'll be happy to answer.
Whoops, microphone. Are there any questions on Planning Manager Hanam's report? Vice Chairman.
Yes, I have a couple of questions on the report. I noticed when I was looking over the city's agendas that there's going to be a workshop tomorrow on parklets and outdoor dining. Does the commission need to be present for this workshop? Or is this just going to be a staff presentation sort of thing?
It's a, it's, the planning commission can be there, I mean, you'll be sitting out in the stands, uh, and enjoying the, enjoy, enjoying the presentation, uh, but no, it's for, it's mainly for the residents in the, uh, within the downtown area and the other businesses regarding parklets and outdoor dining and, and that. But no, the, the planning commission is welcome to attend and just make sure you sit in all opposite corners of the building and, and, uh, you don't talk to each other. Uh, so we, we'll have assigned seating if you do show, so. Uh, but other than that, no, I mean, other than that, yeah, you may, you may attend if you'd like.
All right, and then my next question was, have you heard back from any of the tribes yet? And on the request for consults for the Safety and Environmental Justice Elements?
Not yet, we've sold, we've done the, we've done the first set where we've sent the, the certified mail letters and we've also sent emails. And then this week, I'm in the process of calling each of the tribes uh, to see if there's any comments or if they, making sure they've gotten all our information and if they have any questions or any of that, so. Uh, so we're, we're, we're in the process, so now it's just a matter of, of getting comments. Or if they don't have any comments, then they don't have any comments, so.
Right, just want to make sure, but you know, we're actually, stuff isn't getting bounced or lost or whatever because I think there were a couple of items in the Environmental Justice Element in particular that would be of interest to the tribes. And I'd be somewhat surprised if there weren't comments on them. And that's my questions on your, uh, report done there.
Commissioner Liam Julian.
Yes, um, for context, I did reach out to Planning Manager Hanam over an incident at the Appian Village? Appian Village, um, I was, uh, driving on Appian and towards eighty to pick up my son from school. Uh, the road was closed, there was cones up and there was a sign up, but both lanes were closed. And I was accosted by a construction worker, uh, who then got out of his car and was yelling obscenities in the streets while people were trying to pick up their children, and I know I was not the only one. And I understand that this was, another incident was brought up in September. So just now these are two, um, ongoing incidences. As if it was a pattern in just what is the response from the construction team? Because this is, that's really inappropriate and dangerous, to say the least.
Yeah, we reached out, uh, after that, after the calls reported, uh, we did reach out. Uh, one of our public work inspectors went out, uh, cleared the cones out, told the contractor to remove the cones. Uh, they're not allowed to work within the school period, they have their construction hours that they're allowed to work in. Um, and so they moved the cones, so I don't know if you, I don't know if on your pickup, if you saw that or not. Uh, I did speak to their construction manager as well as the, the representative from De Nova Homes, uh, stating that, uh, um, that that's, that's not appropriate and that, um, and now you guys are even going to be looked on, it's, you know, making sure that you're adhering to these conditions. So, I mean, they're, they're there for a reason. So he told me that he was going to be talking to the superintendent to find out to, to, to take care of business. And so I have a follow-up call with him this week, so.
Um, while that particular, um, staffer was removing cones while yelling expletives as people were like, driving. That's what he, yeah, so he was removing the cones, but just the language, um, right in front of the school. Um, you had both lanes blocked going one way, so that now we have cars going around him. In addition to him, uh, this person using their, trying to use their truck to, to block people from going through to pick up their children. Um, I mean, it's just really inappropriate, dangerous behavior and we, we deserve better.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that I wanted to mention, I forgot to mention that, um, I talked to the public work staff again this morning, uh, and they're making, they're making more routine stops out there because I think that's, uh, that's, that, that's potentially needed at this point since there's been more than one, more than, more than one action, so they are going out a couple times during the day as well as during the, during the, um, the, the school period, uh, that they're not allowed. Uh, they're almost, they're, hopefully the road work part will be, most of the striping and all that will be finished shortly. Um, the only, which the next big step for them would be the operate, making the, the traffic signal operational. And that, they haven't, they haven't gotten to that point yet, that's a few months out. So, uh, they'll have to have that prior to the occupancy of the first building, which they're not expecting that until probably uh, February or March. Um, so, um, so that'll probably be the next big, next big push. So hopefully over Christmas vacation, they can get a lot of that stuff knocked out, so. With all the holiday season coming up.
And there any other commissioners that would like to report anything out? Is there any public comment on this item?
Uh, no comment.
Thank you, and then we'll move on to communications, is there any communications from the commission? Vice Chairman.
Yes, already mentioned the workshop tomorrow, that's going to be from six thirty to eight thirty at the council chambers. And I believe there's also a Zoom link available on the city's website for people who want to join virtually. And earlier on in the day, there's also going to be the regular senior, uh, food distribution for people over fifty-five who can verify their Pinole residence from ten to eleven AM, which I suspect may be somewhat more popular than usual given our current conditions around food security, so wanted to make sure to remind people of that.
Any other communications? And with that, our next meet, regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be on November tenth at seven PM. And with that, we will be adjourned.